To the June 23 meeting of the Goffstown Planning Board. We'll begin with introductions, starting with Brian, please.
Brian Rose, I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Phil Devanza, Selectman.
Gail Abrecht, Recording Secretary.
Tim Redmond, Vice Chair, sitting in for Chairman tonight.
Steve Dutton, Alternate.
Collis Adams.
Thank you, everyone. First order of business for this evening is to consider the minutes from the June 9 meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or comments?
Can I make a suggestion? I think you and I are the only ones that were here. Perhaps we should hold off on these for another meeting.
Okay. We will, we will table these meetings in minutes until the next meeting. Okay, we have another, we have an action item that would, would like to be read into the record. It is a letter from the City of Manchester's Director of Public Works, Kevin Shepherd. The subject is "The City's Drainage Problems and Requesting a Drainage Study for Any Future Work on the St. Anselm College Property That Would Affect the Drainage Heading Towards Rockland Avenue in the City of Manchester." I don't necessarily need to read the letter into the record, I don't believe, but we do have a record, a letter to Carl Queram, the Public Works Director for the Town of Goffstown, from Kevin Shepherd. And I read it briefly, and it outlines the problems that the city has experienced over years of water flow into Rockland Avenue. And he is thankful that we have contacted the city and informed them on changes on St. Anselm's property, and has made a request via the Public Works Director in Gofftown. So that letter will be entered into the record. We have a couple of minutes before we can begin our first item. So we will move down and we'll get some correspondence and out of the way. First one is a letter to Barbara Lambert from Brian Rose. Brian, could you please inform us of what this is about?
Yeah, that's, Barbara Lambert is the owner of Barb's Coffee Plus. And she's asking about getting a liquor license. And basically, the letter is stating to her that the town basically relies on the state liquor licensing requirements for any businesses within our town. So she just has to get her state permit for that, and, and that's enough for the town. So that's pretty much it.
Just a question for you, Brian. Is this, do we have any regulations that would prohibit something like this within certain distances of a school or anything along that line?
I don't believe it's written into our regulations. It may be in, in the state's regulations.
Because I don't know where this location is, 591 Mast Road.
It's right next to Abington Square.
All right. So, so we don't have any recommendations or comments, other than they need to check with the state liquor authority?
That's correct.
Thank you. Next item is a letter to George Clausen from Brian Rose regarding the Tire Warehouse. Brian?
This is basically a request, and you have a few attachments in your packet that kind of illustrate what their request is. They are asking to be able to add an alignment bay into their store there. Currently, they just do tires, but really, they need, they need to be able to align them as well. It's part of doing tires typically. And so what they're asking for isn't, is to put an exterior door that would replace a couple of windows, two or three windows. And it's basically just a drop-down garage door that they would be doing. And so, since that affects the exterior of the building, I felt it necessary to at least copy the planning board on this. If it were just an interior issue and they, they were only making interior changes, then it wouldn't have to come to you. But I just copying, I'm copying you on a decision that this wouldn't require a site plan. And that's basically the gist of the letter, stating that they would not be required to come back to the planning board for a site plan. But this is kind of just for your information, and if you have any comments or if you want to appeal, you definitely can.
So is it correct that they are not expanding the building? They are just working within the existing structure?
That's right. They're, they're not expanding anything. They just are changing around the floor plan and, in, in, in order to be able to accommodate the alignment bay and adding an exterior door.
Bill, I was gonna actually call on you, because I think I know what you're gonna say.
No, well, a couple of things. Was there any, in this change, are they gonna be affecting the parking spaces at all?
The, the, the parking requirements are based on square footage of a building. So the square footage is, is not changing, and so that's.
What are any parking spaces outside the building in front of those windows?
Uh, no, no. There's a canopy, actually, that comes out beyond, beyond where that is already. So that's, that's not gonna affect anything. As far, it's not gonna take away parking, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, so it won't have any effect on any of your parking. Now, did you check their, their current site plan?
Uh, what do you mean?
Because I remember the discussion on the current site plan about repairs, and there were no repairs.
No repairs allowed, or no repairs?
Well, there was a lot of discussion about that, because they said they weren't making repairs. And I remember this canopy, there was a lot of discussion about repair underneath this canopy. And there was also discussion about people buying parts and going out in the parking lot and fixing their cars. And I don't remember what was, what the restrictions were on it, that's all.
I, I didn't go and look at the site plan, but the canopy currently doesn't have any, any specified work. The work that they're gonna be doing would be inside here.
No, no, I understand, because the planning board was adamant that there was no repairs to be done underneath this canopy.
Oh, yeah. No, that's, that's not their plan, so.
I understand, but the point I'm making is, when they came in originally, only work that they did was change tires, balance tires, and sell parts. And there was a lot of discussion here, that we did not want people working on their cars out in the parking lot. They weren't gonna do any repair work underneath here. Now, we're getting front-end alignment, because I'm hearing you have to, to change tires, you have to do front-end alignments. That's what I'm hearing. I heard tonight, which is not what I'm aware of, as far as changing tires. And I just have a concern that this is the beginning of an expansion. Front-end alignment, and something else, and something else being done underneath, underneath there, which is what this, what we were very, very concerned about, did not happen here.
I think alignments are all gonna occur inside the building.
Yeah. They, they are. And I think if, if it gets to a point where we do notice that something's happening underneath the canopy, that we can address it, at that time. But right now, the proposal is to do everything inside the building. So, I mean, that was, you know, that was what drove me to think, okay, this, there's no issue here, no site plan required.
But I guess the point I'm making is, I don't know if on their site plan, what the conditions were. And you're telling me that you didn't look at the site plan to look at the conditions on the site plan. So I don't know if they need a modification of their current site plan, is where I'm going, what I'm coming from. That's my question, I don't know.
So I think, I think it would be solved if Brian could look at the site plan, check the conditions, and make sure that there was no condition that they could not operate repair business inside the building. If it's stipulated, they cannot do it outside the building, that's, that's concrete. But if it's no stipulation about being inside the building, then we wouldn't have any say over that.
I'll double-check that.
And I think the other thing I was gonna mention, Phil, was, wasn't, wasn't there discussion about the sighting of that building in relation to the ice pond and the view and all that?
There was a lot of discussion, and there was discussion on how we tucked it in to preserve the trees that were out in the back, so trees didn't get cut.
But none of that is gonna happen as a result of this application, but I mean, that was all part of the discussion, as I remember.
Yeah. Yeah. There was, there was a lot of, there was a lot of work. There were two, because the Conservation Commission and the HDC were, worked together with the site plan. So that's what I'm saying, there's, there's a lot of concern about this site.
So, Phil, are you satisfied if Brian's gonna check the, the record?
Oh, yeah, no.
I just, I just wanna make sure that Brian was aware of, of what was involved with this.
So Brian, would you please check the record and make sure that it's not gonna conflict with any of the site plan conditions? And if it doesn't, then you can go ahead and.
Yes.
Issue your, this letter to the, Phil, as.
Yes.
Okay, good. Any other discussion on this? Okay, one more quick correspondence item. There's a copy of a driveway permit for 473 Patty Hill Road. The applicant is Jeffrey Hammond. This application has been made to the New Hampshire DOT. This portion of Patty Hill Road is a section of Route 13 that is under the jurisdiction of the State of New Hampshire. It is not part of our co-op, what's the word?
Can you explain the section?
Uh, the compact, urban compact area, which the Town of Gofftown maintains. So the only thing that would apply to this driveway permit that I can think of is that the driveway is going to have to be no closer than 10 feet to the property line. Even though the DOT is gonna issue the curb cut, the driveway would still have to adhere to our development regulations. So I'll just put that in the record. And Brian, if you would see fit to include that note and send a note back to the New Hampshire DOT along with this, and let them know that that's one of our development regulations. Thank you, Brian. Okay, we have one item on our agenda for this evening. It is the completeness review and site plan review hearing for a proposal to remove an existing parking lot and plant a grass common located at St. Anselm College on St. Anselm Drive, Zoned R2. Brian, could you give us an overview of this matter, please?
Okay, this is located on map 3 lots 41 and 62-1, in, in the St. Anselm College campus. And the zoning is residential 2. And the, the plan is to remove the park, the existing parking lot and build a grass common in place of that. Now, because St. Az is in close proximity to both Manchester and Bedford, my, and because of drainage concerns that had been brought up at the last meeting, my recommendation in this report is that it does pose a regional impact, due to the, mostly due to the drainage. If it were, if there were not a drainage concern, I would probably not have recommended that. And maybe hearing from Megan and from the applicant tonight, you know, you might change your minds about that, if, if there's less of a, of an impact or not. But so far, my recommendation, and also due to the letter that we received from the City of Manchester, that they had drainage concerns, I felt it was prudent to recommend that there is a regional impact. The application was submitted as complete as possible, I guess. We didn't receive a drainage study with this, so one of my recommendations is to accept the plan with, with the waiver that the drainage study would be, you know, waive the drainage study for acceptance purposes only, basically, and accept the, the plan without the drainage study. So, let's see if I have any other major concerns here. Oh, St. Anselm College has been working, and TF Moran has been working with the Town of Bedford to replace the parking that they will be taking out. On the Bedford side, they'll be, they're gonna replace it with just as much, plus a few more parking stalls in that, just over the line in Bedford. The access to that new parking lot would still remain through the Goffstown side. They're not making any connections at this point. So the recommendations, again, are to hear the applications, the applicant's presentation, waive for acceptance purposes only the drainage study, find that the site plan proposal does have a regional impact, accept the proposed site plan for review, conduct a public hearing or open a public hearing, and continue it until July 28th for further consideration, so that the applicant can submit a drainage study. And that would give time for staff to be able to review it and make comments, and receive comments from either City of Manchester or the Town of Bedford. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Brian. So I would accept a motion for.
Question first, please.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Barbara.
Is, is a drainage study required by our regs for this application, or is this something that's just coming up because of comments?
I believe it came up because there were considerations, consideration of the amount of runoff water that was already leaving the site.
But, so no waiver is needed for acceptance? We might require it for purposes of final approval, but my point is, on the little checkoff form, whether you're requesting a waiver of anything under our regs, was there something that had to be checked off for a drainage study?
Well, I guess I would make the argument that it's potentially required. It's a non-residential site plan, and all of that stuff is required for anything that's non-residential. But, I mean, it's probably a technicality.
Okay.
I don't know.
I mean, I, because I think the drainage came up as an issue of comment at our last meeting. It wasn't an issue as far as the, the office was receiving the application and initially presenting it to the board.
Well, the last meeting, Barbara, was not about the parking lot. The last meeting was about the football field.
Well, that's true.
This meeting relates to the removal of the impervious surface of a parking lot, replacing it in a different location. And then the football field is also an impervious surface as well. So we, we have issues that are drainage-related, and it was, it was discussed by the Public Works Director with Manchester and.
No, I, I know that those discussions were, occurred. I'm just not sure that we required it to accept it. That was my only point.
Well, we could, we could play it safe and accept it for, acceptance purposes over, and waive it, and if it doesn't need it later, we can, we have at least made the application go forward.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so I need a motion. I need a motion to get this thing started, so we can have a presentation from the applicant.
So.
Second.
I moved it with the waiver, because I don't think it's required to accept, by the way.
All right, so there's a motion by Barbara.
I'm against that process.
To waive for acceptance purposes only, even though she doesn't disagree with it. And seconded by Collis. So I'll, I'll call for a vote on item number two on our list. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Okay, item number three. You can make three and four together, if somebody wants to make a motion for three and four combined.
I'll find the site plan has a regional impact and accept the site, and request that we accept the site plan for review.
We're here, second?
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Any discussion? Holders in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. At this time, we'll ask the applicant to make a presentation. Please, Paul, feel free. For the record, your name, please.
For the record, my name's Paul Coridio, from TF Moran. We've been discussing, this is, the overall campus site is in green. Lighter green is the portion that is set aside with the search on the property. The rest is, is the campus itself. We were proposing this green is at the existing parking lot, which is right here. This is their, their dining facility, the football field, and obviously, the baseball field. What we're proposing to do is put a park there, and like, what's been discussed briefly is, this parking lot will be relocated to where this yellow block is, that is in Bedford, the town line. This is a park, is right there. So that is, you know, basic overview of the project. We are going in front of the Town of Bedford for this parking lot expansion on the 11th of July. And they'll be reviewing it at that, at that, at that point. So this is the overall design that we're looking at doing. This existing parking lot that used to sit between these, all these buildings here is approximately 2.2 acres. The intent is to provide this park area, removing that pavement, and creating a better pedestrian safe access through all these buildings. It's been coordinated with fire to provide gates, locking off these access points. The proposed traffic movement in this area would be a one-way through here, out and around, the parking lot back out. Over here, you could come in, park here. Couple of parking areas here that have some handicap accesses for each building, so they can get into there, some remote spots. There is a great change elevation between this roadway and down here. It's about six feet. That's why there's a, more of a transition here, steps down through the middle. The area, and the reason why we thought we really didn't need a drainage study is because we were eliminating the 2.2 acres of impervious surface, putting in a grass surface. So the original intent here wasn't to do one, until it was brought up at the last meeting with the issues in Manchester and such. So just to give a little background on that, all the other projects that we have done out here on the campus, starting in 1980 with the detention basin down, down at the bottom, has been, has had a drainage report analysis. It's been approved both by the town and the state. So I just wanna go on record that it's the college, we haven't ignored the drainage that runs off our site. We have contained it and, and treated it whatever is needed before discharging. Obviously, we only analyzed it at that point of that detention basin, and maybe not into that culvert. But the new study will definitely take care of all those issues. With, with this park being put in, and this is, this is what will be replaced in Bedford, I know this isn't part of your review, but just to give you an overview of what is gonna be planned in Bedford, this is the parking area that is being proposed. There is no access to this parking lot from Bedford, however, other than two emergency gates here for the Bedford Fire Department. Those will be automated gates, so if they have to respond to something in here, this is a shortcut for them. This road is not in very good shape, they're aware of that, but the chief wanted access this way, so he didn't have to go all the way up and around through Goffstown if he had to address something in here. So that's all been worked out with the town in Bedford. To get to this parking lot, it will, all, all the traffic will be directed through the campus, just the way it is now. It's, like I said, there's no access that way. The only major change would be is if somebody wanted to come in the upper driveway, they wouldn't be able to go looping through this parking lot, they would have to go through and back out and around it down. So the only change that possibly be happening would be, more people will use the lower driveway than the upper driveway, that they may do now. The lighting on this, on the, on this field, or the park, will be the Victorian-style lighting that already exists on campus. So that's, it's in, it's in basically performance with the rest of the campus, and it will be lit. There will be call boxes put back onsite for the, the staff, I mean, the onsite security for the students for nighttime walking and such. So all those safety precautions will be worked out through, with the, with the college. As was stated, just to give you another piece of background information, the parking that we are removing here, the total parking for the entire site is, is approximately 1,947 spaces. That doesn't include any of the special event overflow parking that they put in fields and such. The new, with the new parking lot, the total will be brought up to 1,960. So we're, there are gonna be added about 12, 10 to 12 more spaces with this change. So there is, there will be, you know, a little bit increased that way. And again, any special events on that, they take care of basically getting people to And that's, that, I mean, it's pretty basic in what we're trying to propose here. I mean, it is a green, it's been on their master plan since early on. Our, our original master plan that was done, you know, back in 1999, it's a little different shape, but they had the green kinda designed at that point. That's what their goal was all along, so it's, it's part of their master plan that they've been trying to do, just to keep it in conformance of, you know, what their plans are. And an aerial, an aerial view of this may give some people a little bit better view of what this thing really looks like, if they've been on, on the campus before and can't understand a basic flat. But this is the parking lot we're talking about. And this, you can see the football field, the baseball field. The new parking lot that we're, that's being proposed in Bedford would be in this area So, and, and with that being said, what's being done at that point is approximately 10 acres of this upper area of the campus will be redirected into our drainage system that's being designed for that parking lot. So with the reduction of pavement here, removal of 10 acres, plus or minus, out of the drainage that kinda runs down through it now into this area, you know, we, we feel that we can definitely help some of the situation down in the Manchester end, and by either slowing down time of concentration, putting in some other detention areas under the new parking.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Barbara?
Um, why don't you leave that one up, please?
Okay.
How many, you talked about total parking. How many parking spaces are you eliminating in that parking lot as compared to the new parking lot? What is the actual, if it was on the plan, it was way too small for me to read it.
Yeah, I might have to look at the plan. I don't have that number right off the top of my head.
Is that where the net gain is coming from, though? Is from that?
Yes. Well, again, we're at, we have a few.
Okay.
We have a few, you know, that we're, we're leaving, basically.
All right, that's, that's my next question.
In these couple of spots here, and then the, the newer parking lot's like 319 spaces, so.
Okay. And if, I'm looking at that aerial map, if I go to the upper side of the Dana Center.
Would you like the pointer?
No, I'm afraid I'll hurt somebody with it.
No, thank you. Make you get seasick when you're waving that thing around up there.
If I go to the top of left field there.
Yep.
All right, in that area right there, that you just had your pen over, what is that?
Parking lot.
That's the parking lot. And that's, isn't that fairly elevated from the Dana Center?
No, that's, that's.
Is that the one that's below?
That's below the Dana.
All right, so now, so now I'm coming to where my question, Dana Center. There are quite a few events that are public events at the Dana Center. No, I mean, there are events all the time at the college that are public events. But that parking that you're eliminating provides huge parking for the Dana Center, particularly handicap parking for people who come to events there. And I'm looking at your new plan, and I'm wondering, where are And I'm looking at your new plan and I'm wondering where are those people parking? Because a lot of those people are not walking from that parking lot in Bedford to the Dana Center. And they're not going up the hill from the parking at the ball field to the Dana Center. And they send out flyers for that Dana Center thing, you know, I don't know what the capacity of the Dana Center is, but, uh, you know, um, so, I mean, I noticed that you were keeping a couple of parking spaces there, and I'm at, you know, the college does a good job of keeping care of itself and the people on it. So, I'm not trying to usurp the decision-making of the, the people at the college, 'cause I think they've done a wonderful job over the years with that campus. And they have addressed n- needs that this board has raised, or our building inspector. Um, but it, I'm looking at that, ha- having been to functions at either the Dana Center or the cafeteria, which they probably, I don't know what the name of that building is. And I'm not, the people won't even park, do you know where that, that little existing parking lot is that you're not replacing sort of? Down at, down towards Bedford? You know how there's the main parking lot that's paved and then there's that little one up? I mean, people don't even like to park down there as it is, and you're gonna put them further away.
I, I, I appreciate the comment and I, and I can't answer it today. I mean, we can have it, I'll make sure that, that answer.
I mean, like, because I would think that you need to have a certain amount of handicap spaces for those facilities, and I'm particularly keen on that issue after my year last year.
Within close proximity of the building.
I would think.
Can you, can you put the site?
Or another ser- or another service could be provided.
Put the site plan back up?
For the new parking lot?
Yeah.
For the, for the new, for the new, um, green area?
The new area in Bedford.
New green area. 'Cause I actually was having that same thought in my mind as I was going over the plan, and my first inkling was that.
I was, where, which building is the Dana Center on that?
The one to the left, that's right there.
Right, okay, that's what I thought.
My first inkling was to put all a bunch of handicaps right there and just make that a whole big row of handicaps.
Well.
Because, I mean, really for, for the amount of parking that you're replacing, I mean, how many, how many p- handicap spots were in that parking lot before?
I, I would have to open up those set of plans, so, to answer that, I can do that.
Well, I mean, I don't know that we need to address it.
No, we don't have to address it, no, because it's something you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to research it and possibly make some, some amendments to your plan to address these issues. So, Barbara, you're still got the floor, Barbara, so.
No, that was my main thing.
Bill, you're next.
Well, I was thinking the same thing, because, well, you have Davidson Hall, you have the Dana Center over there, you're talking.
Right, the Davidson Hall, the caf- which I refer to as, yeah.
Right, so, you have, you, you do have a lot of functions there, um, where I, I, I think that there needs to be some handicap spaces there.
Well, I'll pass that along, I know the, the college's, um, first priority to, to them is the safety of the students on it, and they felt that, you know, part of this master plan, putting a, a, the green in this area is to try to keep the traffic where everybody's walking, again, to the cafeteria, uh, from all over campus, and the traffic that flowed through there, um, is, was considerable, so, I, I will, you know, we will research that and try.
Plus you come down that hill and, you know.
Yep. I mean, you know, we still have, you know, I know it's still a walk, these are all, um, you know, accessible routes, so, I, again, we'll, we'll look at that and have, have an answer and have it addressed for the next.
Thank you.
Next meeting.
Collins, you had your hand up.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I think it's great to make the campus more pedestrian-friendly. I think it's great to make the nucleus of the campus more pedestrian-friendly with a common which you find on all the major, uh, college campuses, uh, throughout the country. Um, and I agree with the handicap issue, just make sure we got adequate spacing, close to the buildings, however, one of the biggest events they do is a Gostown High School graduation, and that's held in the ice arena, and that parking lot is closer to the ice arena, the new one, than all the other parking lots. So, I guess, you know, you can look at it from a diff- bunch of different perspectives. Uh, and I don't, I guess I don't see that it's that big a deal, except for the handicap parking.
Right, that's my, I don't care where it's parked.
Yeah. You know, you gotta walk a little bit, oh, well.
Yeah, a- as far as, a- again, for events, we can talk about that, students, they're assigning their parking spots anyways, areas, you know, so, I, we'll definitely have that response, uh, and answers to, to those questions.
Mr. Chair, I have another question. Um, can you put up the larger master, the, not the old master plan, but the larger site plan?
This one here?
Yeah. Um, I'm curious, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, but, um, right here between Gostown and Bedford, that section of road that's in poor shape, you said?
That is, that is the old Runlet Hill Road that was discontinued when the, when, uh...
Subject to gates and bars.
And it was subject to gates and bars by the town of Bedford as, as an, as an ordinance to the Saint, Saint Anselm College to keep traffic from going through there.
It's a walking path.
No, it's a town road.
I understand, but for all intents and purposes, it's used as a walking path.
Yeah, because on the plan, it, I mean, you can see that there's right-of-way there. It's wide enough swath of gray that, you know, it, there is right-of-way, but they've gated it off for, because, because Saint Anselm asked for it to be gated off?
You can be sure that the town of Bedford asked for that to be gated because he did not want the college traffic coming down Runlet Hill as a major access to and from the college. Because that's the Clark Farm right there, that, to the college purchase, the Clark Farm, which is that large green parcel right there, which is the piece where the new parking lot is gonna go. That was about four years ago, I think, or so they purchased the Clark Farm.
As, as a practical matter, that piece of Runlet Road had not been used for years.
That piece of Runlet Road, Road was, when I worked for the town, six years ago, we did not maintain it, it was subject to gates and bars.
Right, it hadn't been used for years.
Yeah, it's pretty, I, we, we were.
Would it make sense, though, for them to upgrade the, the road as, all the way down?
For what purpose, Brian?
To, to make an access.
Bedford would, Bedford would fight that. Bedford would fight that tooth and nail, I can tell you right now. Because the people living in that neighborhood, they, uh, they already have through traffic up Runlet Hill and then down to, um...
Varney.
Varney, at the little store there, that's a big cut-through, and they would, they would scream if you asked to open that up to traffic to the college.
I mean, I just...
You can ask, but...
In, in thinking about traffic circulation on campus, it seems like this parking lot is way out there, and really, the only way to get to it is coming or out, out and around here. Is there a way to get to it from this side?
No.
No.
The, 'cause this will be blocked off, well, again.
Right, this section's gonna be gated, and nobody will be able to drive on that.
But, th- there is that access that runs through there, and it goes back right out, so.
One of my thoughts was, if this isn't gonna be connected, should this section be considered as a drive-through possibility?
No, that's part of the common now.
Well, it's just a walkway on the common, it's a sidewalk on the common, but that could be considered a roadway on the common.
That will defeat the, the pedestrian-friendly atmosphere they're trying to promote.
It's just in front of the two buildings, we're trying to keep the traffic with a lot of student activity at.
There's a big driveway on the other side of the Dana Center, the Sullivan Arena, and the other building, which is a, a two-lane road, it's above the football field, which if, if that's what you wanted to see, then they could possibly consider that, but it's always been like that. Even when they had events, they always had that little piece of road blocked off, you could never drive through there. They allowed, you allowed you to access the green common parking lot from the right side of the plan, and everybody that wanted to use the big parking lot above the arena had to go on the low side and go up. They didn't allow through traffic through there, even during events, they had, always had it blocked off. They'd been there, plenty of them.
Yeah, in my opinion, that's good planning. You put the parking on the perimeter of the site, pedestrian-friendly inside, heaven forbid you have to walk aways, that's the way it goes.
Paul, can I ask a question about that site plan right there?
Sure.
Um, just to the right of the Dana Center, you have a light gray shaded parking area that which, which is existing. Is that elevation the same elevation as the entrance to the Dana Center? Is that, or is there a change in grade right there? Could you accommodate handicap parking along that gray area and possibly add another sidewalk in front of the Dana Center to connect that, and that would make that very easy for handicap people to?
There's a change in grade.
Yeah, there is, that parking lot is lower than the Dana Center.
But how much lower?
Right.
It's pretty significant.
Ten, ten, twelve feet.
Okay, all right, I don't, I can't remember.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I'd have to.
Yeah, it goes down quite a bit.
Just walk, just walk up. Last Thursday night, and you've gotta go up, up the grade.
Okay, I'm just trying to remember, I don't remember the name of that one. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions for the applicant? We'll open up the public hearing at this time to the public. Seeing none, um, I would ask for any comments that Meg might have on behalf of the engineering department for the town.
Well, I had a meeting today with, um, T.F. Moran, St. Ays in Manchester to talk about drainage, and, um, you know, he already brought up some of those points, but, um, you know, they talked about how this is reducing by about two acres, and, uh, we were happy to hear about a ten or twelve acre chunk that already goes to the Rockland Ave drainage system is gonna be redirected to where the new parking lot is, and they plan to install, I believe they said, uh, you know, a large detention pond maybe down there, um, and they're gonna obviously balance the pre and post flow, so whatever the pre-existing flow is leaving there now, even though they're adding the ten acre area, they're gonna address that and balance the flow. So, they're gonna do a drainage study that encompasses that entire area and also has, um, an evaluation point out at Rockland Ave for us, too. And so, we'll be able to look at how much is going off toward Bedford, how much is coming down toward us. Um, they also mentioned that last summer, they had, um, reestablished a bunch of the swales near the downstream, or just upstream of the Rockland Ave culvert, they had reestablished some of those swales, they had dug out about two-thirds of the detention pond, um, to reestablish the bottom grade, um, 'cause they had filled in, you know, with cattails, and they, um, some of the holes, the, um, the outlet structure from the detention pond has a bunch of small holes to bleed it all in slowly, and those had been blocked up, so it was all just overflowing, uh, into the top. So, they've reestablished that so that it's bleeding out at a regular rate, you know, as it should, instead of always filling up and then overflowing. Um, so that was good. And they said that, um, they've been monitoring it very closely since they've done that work to see if it's been overtopping out down by Manchester, and they don't feel as though they've seen anything. So, um, the Manchester representative, Dave Winslow, who was at the meeting, is gonna go back to, um, his office and talk to them and just see if they've had problems, if, if the highway supers out on, you know, out on the road have seen any issues in the last year. Um, because, you know, some of Kevin Shepherd's concerns were over the last several years that've been a, a lot of issues, but St. Ays wants to know specifically, since that work was done last summer, has Manchester seen an issue, because they feel as though it means it a little better. Um, you know, me, St. Ays also mentioned that they were open to working with the two towns, you know, the town, the city, um, with, allowing them to use some of their land to do something else, not, they're not looking to build anything else, but let's say, like, uh, upstream of the Rockland Ave culvert, if, you know, the two towns wanted to build a detention pond, but unfortunately, it's all very, very wetland-y over there, so I think, I don't know how ugly a permit process would be to establish a detention pond in an area that's a wetland, and then you get into the dam bureau and everything if you make it too deep, so, I don't know. I, I don't know if that's something that the two towns wanna sit down, you know, probably it's up to Carl and Kevin, you know, Carl Quirm and Kevin Shepherd, to sit down and decide if that's a project they wanna, you know, look into. Um, but St. Ays just said it's an option, you know, there's this area, but it's pretty wet, so I don't know what we would be allowed to do, yeah.
Well, Barbara mentioned the drainage study, whether it was actually required or not. Have you reduced the scope of the drainage study for the areas could, that are being considered, to try to help the, the college keep this under control? I mean, have you limited it to the new parking area, rather than the entire campus site?
It's not the entire campus, but it's the entire area that drains to the Rockland Ave culvert.
Okay.
Um, the only thing they're not getting into pipe-by-pipe and structure is what's out on St. Ays Drive. They're looking at the whole system that comes to the pond, every pipe that goes to the pond, and then what they'll do is create a couple of points, uh, to evaluate the flow downstream based on certain assumptions, but they won't model every pipe and structure down St. Ays Drive. So, um, they're gonna focus on the main chunk that comes down.
Okay.
So, I think that's a good starting point, we'll look at all that, and, you know, I think taking the ten acre section and moving it, you know, should help, and they seem to understand the concerns and, you know, they wanted to work with us on that, so, that was good.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Megan? Thank you, Meg. All right, um...
Wetlandly, wetland-y, wetland-y, that's a great word.
Take that back to D E S with you.
I'll bring that back.
Put that right over your chair.
Write a definition for that.
I'm a wetland-y, I'm a wetland-y type of guy. Okay, well, if we have no more comments from the board or questions for the applicant, I would suggest that we, uh, continue this public hearing to July twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven for further consideration.
Is that enough time? I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to July twenty-eighth with the expectation that there's going to be further consideration of the drainage, and a drainage study will be submitted and reviewed in a sufficient timeframe to allow for staff review and comment and to allow for review and comment by the City of Manchester and the town of Bedford.
Second.
Okay, second by Collins.
And I, I, and I said sufficient time, because if there's not comment coming back, I don't, I'm not particularly interested in continuing it again. I mean, I want it done enough so that if people wanna comment on it, they can.
All right, before I call for a vote, I'd like to ask, Paul, will you have your input from the town of Bedford prior to this date that we have set for you for your next hearing?
Yeah, we're, our hearing is July eleventh on the parking lot.
So, you expect to, you'll...
And we've already been before them already once, so...
So, you have an expectation that you'll be able to resolve any issues with Bedford, so that you'll be able to come here with a final disposition and we can get a vote on it if, if we can?
That's what our intend, that's what we're hoping, yeah. I mean, I, I can't speak for the, the board.
No, I understand that, but that, I'm just, your expectation.
Expectation is, yes.
Is it sort of agreed that until Bedford okay's the parking lot, our approval of the plan is sort of moot?
Well, it's got to do with the drainage, and that would be a point that the engineering department has to work out with T.F. Moran to their set.
No, no, I understand, the drainage study needs to be done, but if, for some reason, his parking lot doesn't get addressed by Bedford on the eleventh, I guess we can go forward contingent on the approval.
I mean, I would hate to think that Bedford would deny them their parking lot, which would make the whole plan undoable.
Well, that's what I mean, okay.
That's why I'm waiting, I'm just asking the applicant if he feels confident that he would be able to come back to this date and not have to move it out, but we'll have to wait and see.
And the applicant has told me that they're, they are going to build the parking lot first before destroying this other one, so that way they don't e- end up with...
Well, that would make...
No parking.
Yeah.
Don't tear your house down before you move in.
I agree.
Okay, um, I'm gonna call for a vote on Barbara's motion, seconded by Collins. Any more discussion? Hold those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have any other items before the agenda tonight, uh, we can wait around and take an eight-thirty break in thirty-six minutes if you'd like.
No, no, I have something I wanna pass out, though, and talk about briefly, briefly.
Barbie, you have something for the board?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not on our agenda, but we'll allow it.
I know, I know, and I just...
Rare, rare exception.
As a longstanding...
I was, 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 I was,
May I introduce, Barbara, this is through the Southern New Hampshire Planning that you're a member of?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we knew where this was all coming from.
All right. I'm a member of Southern New Hampshire Planning, and conjunction with my appointment to that commission by this town, I've been appointed by that commission to be on the Metro Center New Hampshire Steering Committee.
Which is?
Well, and that's what this first page is that I've just given you. It's a regional economic development initiative of the Greater Manchester Chamber of Commerce with Southern New Hampshire Planning. So it's a hybrid, really, of the Manchester Chamber of Commerce and Southern New Hampshire. And I'm not going to go through the details of this, you can read it, but it's gone back to 2001, and it's basically a regional initiative to support planning, appropriate development and planning on a regional basis in the Manchester area as compared to a town-by-town development.
Excuse me, one minute.
Yep.
Do we need Meg to stay for this?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Meg, please, we're all done. If you'd like to go home, thank you for coming.
So there have been various roundtables or meetings held by people, by Metro Center New Hampshire, and it was actually in 2005 when the name actually got adopted. As part of what's going on now, and this has been a volunteer group that's been funded with hours from, primarily from the Chamber of Commerce, has supported it with one of their support staff, person doing a lot of hours on this. And one of the things that the Metro Center is looking at, along with some investor model approaches to funding the initiative, is something called Certified Site Program, which is what I have on this handout. And basically, a certified site program is something that's identified in other parts of the country. There was a forum at St. Anselm's that was hosted by Metro New Hampshire where there was a certified site selector who came out and talked about this program. And basically, what it amounts to is you have larger companies who are looking to move or establish in a particular area, and they actually would like to know what sites have water and sewer available for them and are sort of ready to build if they wanted to come and locate, as compared to finding a site, going through the investigation necessary to find out what water sewer is available, and then going to the planning board to get a plan approved. And it all ends, so the idea is, is that you have a site that would be developable by an industrial or commercial use, generally, is what we're talking about. And the owner of the property commits to doing a planning process for approval of a use on the site. And in conjunction with that, you have your plan review. So in other words, a building might be looked at that's up to, you know, 30,000 square feet that's situated on this portion of the site that will require drainage on this portion of the site. And essentially, you go through a hypothetical development on the site, along with, including as much as architectural standards, as to any building that would need to be built. And the planning board addresses that and approves that plan. And what happens is, is that by having that site approval, the development of the site does not then need to come back to the planning board. As long as the development is within the constraints of what was reviewed initially, they don't have to come to this board. And that's very appealing for developers to know that they can come to a site and essentially start working immediately with local officials on their plan and build it and not have to come to the planning board, as much as people love to come see planning boards.
So is it kind of like the movie, if you build it, they will come? So if the town or a developer puts the sewer and the water in and the gas mains in to the property, and then you go through the process, and we would approve a 30,000-square-foot box building with appropriate parking and lighting, the developer then just shows up and builds their building. They don't have to go through all this, jump through all the hoops.
Right. Okay.
Pre-approval process.
Essential.
And the design review can be already pretty much accomplished with, you know, when they come in, they'll obviously want to tailor it to their own business and things like that, but they'll stick to some sort of setup...
Parameters that are set forth.
Mainframe parameters, yeah, that have already been agreed upon and approved by the planning board prior. And then that would be something that staff would just look at and say, okay, this looks like it's pretty much in line with what was agreed upon, and approve it.
And it...
We did that in Arizona.
Phil wanted to make a comment on what we're talking about.
Yeah, well, I wanted to ask Barbara a little bit about this bronze, silver, and gold certification on the sites that I'm reading about for economic development. Is that something that our industrial park on the back road would be able to get one of these certifications? Because from what I understand here, then when people come and look by that designation, they know where it is?
Right.
So if we could get that certified, then that, since this is more of a regional certification, it might...
No, this would be by each town.
No, no, I understand, but it's viewed regionally. It was...
That's the idea, is so that somebody could come in and say, what sites are in the region that have this much, I can build a building this many square feet. And apparently, there was a site selector that, within the last couple of weeks, called Manchester, I think they might have called, I can't remember, they called another community, and it was a site selector calling and saying, I need to build a building this big. Do you have any sites?
A place for it to go.
For it to go. And it was a huge building, and I'm not sure what the answer was, but that call went into a couple of communities. But yeah, exactly. I mean, I do think Back Road, Back Road's got a couple of other issues. I do know Tony Martz, I think, talked to the Economic Development Council a little bit about this, to say it was something that they were thinking about, the different certifications have to do with, obviously, the level of pre-approval that occurs and how, and that type of thing. The biggest issue that I understand has come up in some of the planning meetings is a concern that the boards in the communities are not going to be too thrilled about doing a plan review and having the plan out there for five years. Because in order to get people to be willing to commit to the process, you need to give them some commitment that the plan is going to be good for a period of time. And there would be some expectation that if nothing had changed, that they would be able to simply come in and renew it after that time period. But this is, you know, from a regional perspective, we think this is really important. As Brian has said, other areas of the country have been doing it.
We did it without having it actually under that Certified Site Program, per se, but we had it in our internal process to do that anyway, for like a large shopping center where there was a Walmart and a Target and stuff. You know, they would do an overall site, and they would lay out, okay, this is where our parking is going to be, this is where we're going to have several pads and everything. And then those pad developments never had to come back to the planning board again for reapproval. It just was an approved site plan, and they just came in and built their building the way they wanted it, and that was it.
Barbara, I have a question for you. If we were to adopt a certified site program, would that require a ballot article and a change to our regulations?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the committee is sort of working on it. They want to try, we want to try and sort of get something with all the communities that's fairly uniform. Obviously, different communities are going to have slightly different requirements. I'd sort of like it to look exactly the same from community to community. The reality is, that's not going to happen. But, and it's going to be, obviously, within the confines, the certification for a site will be within the parameters of our zoning, you know. So what might happen in a commercial site in Goffstown might be different than a commercial site in Manchester or Raymond. But that's the idea, is that it would be a process set up where it would be adopted at the ballot, after the planning board took a look at it and agreed with it, that would allow property owners to come in to obtain a site certification, that it is ready to be built in a certain manner.
And then, and then there's also, isn't there a website that all this information would be put on to where, you know, when site selectors are looking, they just go on to this certified site website, and they can pull down all that data and say, oh, look, there's one in Goffstown that I could look at? And so, I mean, that would be awesome, to be able to get much more reach to other people from all over the country.
And I mean, that is the goal. I mean, ideally, the goal would be that if you were looking, you'd hook into this website for the Greater Manchester area. And, you know, I sort of say, I'd like to see it without town boundaries, so when you click in, you know, for 10,000, whatever it is, it just pops up regardless. But I, there is a website for Metro, but I'm reluctant to talk about it because we're, you know, operating on a volunteer from the Chamber worked on the website, and it's not that it's not accurate, but it's based on 2000 census data, which was updated by the survey, American citizen, I forget the name.
American Community Survey.
Community Survey, in 2008, and now we have the 2010 census number. You know, there's been some elected official changes since then, so the website's not up to date. It's frankly, our biggest frustration is that keeping a website up to date and current takes money because it's just a really, it's a time-consuming process, and we really haven't had it. But that is exactly what the goal is in this particular program. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
I have another question for you.
Sure.
If we were to adopt a certified site program, we would set parameters for building footprint, parking, and have all the normal items checked off.
Right.
Would we, how would we handle things like the operations inside the building or different things? You know, you might say a Target would be a nice building to have in town, but what if a chemical company wants to come in in town? Would we have to set parameters as to what types of businesses could come into town or occupy these sites?
Well, but that, but that's going to be a function of your zoning ordinance as to what's allowed in the zoning.
Okay. Okay. Well, I just was, I was wondering if that was a consideration? Because you might, you know, you might have one that's in a residential slash commercial area, something along Mass Road where you still have homes. I mean, would you want a chemical company coming in and setting up shop?
But I think we addressed that just last year with the zoning change for a property on the back road to commercial.
Right.
You know, once a lot has got a zoning on it, its use is either permitted by ordinance or not.
I remember that case.
And, you know, if you're next to a commercial property and it's a permitted use, the reality is that permitted use is allowed to go in there.
Right.
So I, I mean, you may find when you do this that there are aspects of the zoning ordinance is that need to be addressed. I mean, I think we've had issues come up that we know it doesn't, but...
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, Collins?
And so then it would be expected that they would conform to architectural landscaping stuff so that...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, apparently, some communities have some pretty clear expectations for architecture.
Now, who is going to be the person to bring forth the parameters for what would be acceptable? We would generate that, or would some outside applicant come in and say, okay, we own these properties, we'd like to get a rating for this property? Who's going to set the standards for that property? Something that we have to decide as a board?
Well, the certification would be as to what needs to be done, but it would be in accordance with your planning board regulations. I mean, ultimately, it's in accordance with whatever this planning board finds is appropriate.
So no applicant ever comes forward to propose a piece of property to, for a gold certification? It's a piece of property that someone owns, and who brings it forward to us?
The owner would.
The owner would, okay.
The owner would.
Right. So there would be, there would be an applicant at some point.
Right. There would need to be an applicant. We would simply, this would simply allow the process to go forward, and it gives an owner some incentive. Because what we hear all the time is, I've got somebody willing to lease it, or I've got somebody willing to buy it, but now I'm here to see if we can get this approved.
So the owner brings forth a sort of a generics set of parameters that we could build this size building on this lot as long as we meet all these criteria, and then out, and we don't even have to see a site plan on it?
You don't have to see it again.
Yeah. Tim, and I think that's what the bronze, silver, and gold is.
Right.
I think once you've got that classification, it tells you at what level, because that bronze might be one where you have to go to the planning board for a certain thing.
Now, does the owner come forward with things like pre-storm runoff calculations and post-storm to meet all our regulations? Who's going to do all that?
Well, that's our regulations. The owner would need to do it.
The owner would do it, so that the applicant, or the ultimate purchaser of the site would have all that legwork done, and they would know that you can have this many parking spaces, and you can have this size building, and this is what you have to do.
It's a huge investment on the part of property owners. I mean, there's no que, and we may decide that, you know...
But that's why they're looking to get a longer time period of approval.
Of approval.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. I understand that.
So that they can be able to have that time to find someone to occupy the space.
Now, this is something where we have sewer and water on Mass Road, on the, down by the Shell Station, but we don't have high-flow gas. Would the town of Goffstown be expected possibly to float a bond and provide high-flow gas to that area so that we could get a return on the tax base on land down through there? This is the kind of stuff...
Not from this program.
But you're not going to attract the types of businesses...
Well, I mean, Tim, that's, that's a discussion of municipal management, the Water and Sewer Commission and the Economic Development Commission.
But this sort of goes, but this sort of goes to the whole concept of a site that has the amenities that a, that these types of people want on their site.
But if you're going to talk about that, then we can talk about the reality of how many sites there are in Goffstown when you have mountains and a river through the middle of it. I mean...
I'm just covering bases that we need to cover.
It's a piece of the puzzle, well. This is a important piece of the puzzle.
Right. It's a piece of the puzzle, whether or not Goffstown has the sites that ultimately would ever have the services to support a large-scale industrial or commercial development is a different, is a different issue. You know?
But in your statement, you said that these types of services have to be available for these types of gold, silver, and bronze certifications.
Site selectors will tell you that they wanted a minimum water and sewer at a site in order to be interested in it.
At a minimum.
Yeah.